We're ready to begin our board meeting for this evening. Thank you and welcome you, those who have shared with us tonight. And we'll open with our roll call. Mrs. Baylor?
Here.
Mr. Bravo?
Here.
Mrs. Lasher?
Here.
Mrs. Measfield?
Here.
Reverend Walker?
Present.
At this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance. We were hoping for our newly-elected board member, student board member, would be present, but she's not here. So we're going to ask that Mr. Mansfield would lead us.
Oh. Surprise. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a moment for community and school reflections. If anyone has any reflections at this time.
I know everyone's probably noticed already the lovely tokens from the science fair folks. And Katrina Holassa did just a fantastic job. Mrs. Lasher and I got to be there on Saturday and were there for the award ceremony. As always, it runs like clockwork. And the entire time that she's there, she's already saying, "Oh, next year we're going to try this, and next year we're going to try this, and wait till I fix this." And we're like, Katrina, it's already perfect. It's so wonderful. And the students were fantastic. I unfortunately didn't get there in time to see very many of the exhibits. I know we had, as usual, several students that won again and again and are going to represent us very well at the University of Akron for the regionals and then hopefully on to states. So that was wonderful. And then while we were there, we actually also got to go up and see the renovation at North. Ms. Tecka took us upstairs to see the College and Career Academy. It's the Health and Service.
Global Tech and Business.
Oh, that's the Global Tech and Business thing? Oh, yeah, we went to both. That's right, we did go to both. But we went to the new part and just amazing to see the transformation as an alum and somebody who's been in that space before, to see the change. It's really breathtaking. So I recommend if you get a chance to go over there and take a look. We also got to see the Promethiest boards, and I can't wait to see one in operation. I know. So I'll let Morgan talk a little bit more about the things we got to see with that. But just huge kudos to all of the staff that were involved that day. Heard parents walking in saying with their students, talking about, wow, we got to stop at that table and we got to hear about that College and Career Academy part and this and that. And they were just so excited and still humming from the events of the day. So just do a great job.
Are you going to continue on?
Oh, sure. I'm happy to do that. Yeah, it really was fantastic. And we've got this in our bag. It's a bit of a program, but on page two, there is a list of all the financial sponsored awards. There were some really cool things, like a lot of the kids left with checks, they left with computers. It was really cool. Especially thank you to all the folks who were responsible for getting those awards and the businesses connected to them too. A couple other things that happened in the last two weeks, it felt like we were really busy. There was a lot going on, which was exciting. Many of us went to the Akron Roundtable with Governor DeWine. And I think if you looked at his whole speech and kind of broke it up into buckets, the biggest bucket was probably kids, which was exciting. I think there were other buckets that seemed missing to me, but it was really exciting that kids was such a big focus for him. That MLK breakfast on Monday, one, it was amazing that people got there, given the weather challenges. But the speakers, Dr. Maurice Stinton, I think I'm saying his name correctly, and then the two other speakers from the community that read some poetry were outstanding. I also got a chance to go to the LHCCAA Career Expo, which was so cool. It was the first time that I felt like I really saw the action around the academy programs. And you saw the sparks fly between community members and students talking about real-world stuff. There were like literal actual sparks in the First Energy area. But it was just really cool and amazingly organized. Like after around 10th grade time and the transition of the students between the different sections, it was just really, really exciting. See, not a ton of like milling about or chatting with friends. It was like, no, I want to get in front of this EMT person and this First Energy person. And everyone was really excited. So thank you.
Well, I attended a couple of things that were mentioned by the other two ladies. But another thing that I attended was the Ohio Black Women's Leadership Caucus, the Akron chapter. And the funny thing about it is they honored 30 men in the community that had done work with children, mentoring, and all sorts of wonderful things. And quite a few of our teachers, I noticed one teacher from Book to High School, Kenny Smith, he was honored. And there were some other teachers that were honored there as far as helping students and things of that nature. But the fascinating thing about that is I had no idea these guys were doing all this wonderful work in the community to help our children. So it was really good to hear. I mean, it's a book full of, you know, different things that they all contributed to our community. So it was really uplifting to me to see them honor, you know, this is Martin Luther King and all that. So a lot of that's going on and paying tribute to guys whenever you're a female organization speaks volumes. So that's basically what I appreciate.
All right. I'll just highlight some things a little later. Excuse me. At this time, we have no one to address the board, and we have our communications and recognition. Superintendent? All right. This month, the month of January, we, the Ohio School Board Association, recognizes school board members for your outstanding work, your dedication, your commitment to being a part of the team, the team that helps our students. We see from time to time on the wall the various little placards, "I Believe in Public Education," "Standing Up for Public Education," "Who Am I Today," "It Began with Public Education," and others. So we're reminded of your contribution that you have made unselfishly to help our staff, our superintendent, our students. So on behalf of the OSBA, its president, and Rick Lewis, the executive officer, these words of congratulations, a certificate of appreciation. And one goes, the first one is Mrs. Alexander, who is in Washington, D.C., advocating on our behalf, part of the All-Star Team School Board Recognition Month of January. Ginger Baylor, part of that All-Star Team of School Board Members. And then Patrick Bravo. And Morgan Lasher. And you remember, of this team. And then Lisa Mansfield. And then Tim Miller, who is away in Spain, visiting his school, another outstanding member. And then to myself. While I was in Washington, D.C., at the advocacy meeting, I sat next to a board member from another district. And the first thing she said, I hadn't sat down for just a few seconds, the trouble she's having with the board members, how long she had been on the board, and new board members had come in, and they just pulled the rug from underneath her, and it was dissential. We have changed these seats and changed personnel, but this board has been solid in their respect, their cooperation, their working with one another. We've been able to weather various activity storms, different directions that we may have had. But we have been solid in our civility and our respect for each other's opinion and the work that we're doing. And I hold this board up as a fine example throughout the state of Ohio, as a wonderful example of what board members can do when they work together and accomplish all the wonderful things that we have accomplished most recently. And we'll hear about some great things in just a few minutes about some continuations of that wonderful work that our staff and teachers and administrators are doing. So again, thank you so very much for your wonderful work. The winners of the 2018 Ohio Department of Education Momentum Award, and we have two buildings that we want to congratulate this evening. The first, we want to recognize and congratulate the staff at the David Hill Community Learning Center for receiving the Ohio Department of Education 2018 Momentum Award for exceeding expectations in growth, student growth for the year. And we want to ask Principal and... (Applause). While they're doing that, Mr. President, I'd just like to, some items that Principal McIntyre presented with us that were contributors, or are contributors to David Hill's success. In their, you know, our schools all do 90-day plans, and in their 90-day plan, their action steps include what's called the SAMR Professional Development. SAMR, the letters stand for Substitution, Augmentation, Modification, and Redefinition. And that model's a valuable framework that the school uses in evaluating learning, facilitating design of learning activities, and supporting the transformation of learning. They also implement what's called OWL time. The principal and grade-level teams meet monthly in addition to their weekly professional learning community meetings, and they discuss various data points and strategies to help students' progress and become more successful learners. And in addition, they focus on infusing technology into their instructional practice, implementation of district-wide literacy, professional development, and really gets down to supporting and celebrating student success. These are just a few of the steps that Principal McIntyre outlined for us that are contributing to David Hill's success. So I'd like to say congratulations.
Thank you, Eric. I'm honored, and I have my, it's my staff, I'm a giver to the staff and the students for just doing a great, great job and working very hard. Our word this year is intentional, and we are going to be more intentional, making sure that we are addressing all the students' needs and skills. So that is my word for the year. Every time we have a staff meeting, I'm bringing that up, making sure that we are digging deeper into what our students need and making sure our instruction is right on point.
Thank you.
No, this is my fourth-grade teacher, brand-new to our building, and she is also representing the fourth grade on the STEM team. This is Nicole Rinaldi.
In addition, the NIFT STEM High School, we want to recognize the staff and all those who have contributed in a wonderful manner for receiving the Ohio Department of Education 2018 Momentum Award for exceeding expectations and student growth for the year. And we want to ask the principal and staff that they will come forward at this time. (Applause). Cut around both sides. Get your gear. And so, Mr. President, Dean of Pope, the principal at STEM High School, has shared the following with us. For the second time in three years, the STEM High School has received the Momentum Award from the state. And again, you know, this award recognizes and shows how the STEM High School has repeatedly exceeded expectations of student growth. STEM's core belief is that all learners can learn, and STEM's learning coaches work tirelessly to meet the learner's needs each and every day. The learning coaches meet weekly, focusing on student data and individual learner growth, social and emotional support, and building a culture of collaboration. And speaking of collaboration, the STEM school collaborates with over 50 community partners, the University of Akron has their sister university, to support the work in the classroom, internships, and problem-based learning experiences. And Principal Pope noted that none of this would be possible without the support of parents, family, the district, their PTSA, and their staff, for which he's very thankful. So congratulations.
I'm very excited to accept this on behalf of our entire staff and the NIFSTAM community. Tonight brought with me Jen Blankenship, who's our current freshman academy principal, Dr. Selena Myers, who's our academy coach, Ben Graber, who's been a part of our STEM team since he's been at STEM High School, and Maureen Pope, who's our librarian and our media tech specialist, who makes sure we integrate technology into everything that we do. So thank you.
Thank you. We want to thank our outstanding leaders and schools for their special recognition and continue to encourage them to continue to do the outstanding job that you are doing so that we can repeat the award next year. At this time, we are so happy to have our student representative from our Akron Early College. And we're so sorry that transportation was not there on time to make sure that you were here. We'll make sure we do a better job to make sure that you get to be here on time to represent your other student representatives. But we're happy that you're here. And as we had said, as President Bravo, that said, former President Bravo and Mrs. Mansfield, we want you all to feel a part of the board. So at this time, Saad, Salim?
Salim.
Saad will give us some reflections.
Okay. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
I'm Saad, I'm Saad from Akron Early College. I'm a ninth grade there, and I'd like to share positive things about my school. Starting with number one, good activities. We have a thing called Gold Card and Blue Card, where a Gold Card is given to someone with a 3.7 GPA and above, and a Blue Card is given to students with a GPA of 3.3 and higher. Both of these cards give you an opportunity of going anywhere for typically lunch and study hall. For example, if you're a student and you have lunch and you don't want a standing cap to you, you could go anywhere, typically going to get Chick-fil-A or Starbucks and go around campus and the folks would be there. And then we have things called a high school competition, where every year, each grade goes against each other in various activities, such as a human wheelbarrow, a balloon attack, ambassador. And this allows us to, like, just through the body to connect with each other, for we don't see each other lots, if we go up and down campus at a university. So it allows us to connect. And we'll be on to coffee. We're the number one high school, my high school, Akron College, is number one in the summit county of number seven in the state of Ohio, based on our test scores and our graduation rate. Akron Early College has been invited for summit and application for a National Blue Flagged School Award. My high school, Akron College, was chosen for being the top 15% of all public schools in the state of Ohio. The National Blue Flag is proud of the United Forum of Education and celebrate great American schools. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. And now we have an additional award celebration at this time. And this would be to announce the IB Primary Years Program at Resnick Community Learning Center. And I'm excited, very, very excited for personal reasons. Resnick was the first elementary school that was built, and at that time, I was the president of the board then. And now to have the honor of being the president of the board today, when they are receiving this outstanding recognition. Again, last time, last week when we met, last board meeting, historical, having student representatives, this meeting again is historical. So we're going to try to make sure every meeting has some historical significance. But we're so proud of Resnick and the work that they're doing. So we would ask the principal and the staff that they would come, as the superintendent has some words of commendation. Mr. President, we've had an international baccalaureate diploma program at Firehill High School for 25 years. And at previous board meetings, we proudly announced the authorization of Litchfield Community Learning Center as a middle-year program international baccalaureate school. And we announced the authorization of the KCLC as a primary years program international baccalaureate school. Today, we're pleased to announce that a fourth school has achieved authorization status. There's just one more step in the process, and we'll need to affirm our support for the school. We have support, and we'll continue to support the process. As a result of the leadership of our assistant superintendent, Dr. McWilliams, with the support of this Board of Education, and the tireless efforts of the faculty, staff, administration, parents, and community, the Judith Resnick Community Learning Center is now an authorized primary years program international baccalaureate world school. So we now have four IB program schools within our district. I think that deserves a round of applause. So we have Mrs. Kirsten Booth, our principal at Resnick, Mrs. Lori Wamas, the Resnick IB program teacher, and Mrs. Tammy Brady, the former principal at Resnick. I think they should really be recognized for leading this process at Resnick CLC. And again, Mrs. Booth has brought several of her faculty members with her tonight, and I would like her to tell us who's with us.
Sure. So we have Becky Murray, gifted and talented teacher, Amy Binningert, interventional specialist, Kristy Daniel, interventional specialist, Alyssa Miller, music teacher, Pam Beswetherick, third-grade teacher, Lori Wamas, Kim Hathaway, kindergarten teacher, Ken Rocco, fourth-grade teacher. And Mrs. Brady.
So when the award letter dated January 18, 2019, Sean Rankin, IB head of authorization, wrote, "I am pleased to inform you that the International Baccalaureate Organization has approved your school for authorization to offer the primary years program." And while this award letter marks the start of the official launch of the PYP title for Resnick CLC, the journey started again a few years ago. The collaborative work of the faculty with leadership of the principals and the guidance of Lori Wamas is a celebration of teachers supporting student growth and achievement. And I say congratulations to Resnick CLC.
TJ.
TJ.
TJ. Come on.
He had his big sign up saying, "Thank you."
Come on, TJ.
Well, I personally, I was telling Reverend Walker when I walked in, that it almost gives me goosebumps, because today's 33 years since the Challenger went down. So it's almost like Judy's looking over us today and that we can give her this great honor. It's, you know, it's kind of one of those moments, we all work so hard, but the amount of support that all of you have given us, from Karen Gijik over there, who's sitting there quietly, that she has supported us the entire way, to Tammy leading the work, to all of you just supporting Reverend Walker, thank you. So good things are to come. I want to thank Jen Victor back there, too, because she's the one years ago that brought this here as well. So we thank you, we love it, the best is yet to come. So we are just thrilled at Resnick. So thank you so much.
And thank you also very much for your contributions that you continue to make for public education. At this time, we'll have approval of our meeting minutes, our regular meeting minutes. To move. Is it moved? Is it second? Any questions or comments? Roll call. Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Measfield?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
At this time, then, we'll have our superintendent's recommendation. Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 27 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval. Any questions or comments? Is it properly moved? Is it second?
Second.
Properly moved, seconded. Any questions or comments? This time, roll call. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration two motions and eight resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
To move. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Yes.
I just wanted to point out, under the donations this time around, there are several, there are many, from the LeBron, that are in regards to LeBron James Family Foundation, I Promise School. Particularly the significant funds to create the production and media lab at that school, which was for over $250,000. I want to make sure we acknowledge that. And also the cost for a lot of the remodeling and branding of IPS.
The other? Hearing them, roll call. Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 11 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval. To move. Is it moved? Is it second?
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing them, roll call. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report. Yeah, so the first thing is, I know everyone's concerned about Wednesday. I'll make that decision next week, so you don't... But we've been getting phone calls. We'll make our decision tomorrow. I didn't want to do it today, because I was afraid if we would have had all calls going out, people would have thought, there's no school tomorrow. There is school tomorrow. So we'll get that taken care of. We just want to make sure, if students are out of school, just to be very careful, because those windshields are going to be dangerously low on Wednesday and heading into Thursday. So tonight, I wanted to give a quick update on our facilities program. I want to give an update on the Imagine Akron CLC project and where we are, you know, current status of buildings. I want to talk about some of the buildings that will not receive state funding, because we basically have accounted for all the students that they'll fund. Status of any special program, you know, locations and closed buildings. A brief update on 10 North Main Street. And I want to talk about some of the housing and community development efforts in Akron, and how they might affect our APS schools in the near future. So in terms of our facilities project, 32 buildings have been completed. LHC community learning center is under construction and should be complete by July, over the summer for us to move in. We have, Kim Moore Garfield CLC is in design. Probably, as we mentioned at the joint board meeting earlier, we should have a face submission schematic design complete during the month of February, may actually bring... May actually bring some schematic design drawings for the board and the joint board to look at. And then our remaining buildings at our schools that are not funded in the program are, of course, Miller South, Firestone Park, Pfeiffer, and North, which will bring our total to 38 buildings under the program. Basically, on the project status, you know, our KCLC was completed and opened in August of 2018. As I stated before, Ellet CLC is currently under construction, nearing completion, and we target a completion date of July. Kenmore Garfield, by the time we get the existing building demo this spring, start some early site work and start construction. We're looking at a completion date, I believe, of 2022, '21 or '22, probably more '22. And then again, the list of our unfunded buildings that won't receive any state match. So for those, we've had our, we call it our permanent improvements panel. We've been getting requests from buildings and looking at the condition of these buildings to determine what they need. And so here are the larger projects for these buildings. For Miller South, we really do need to replace the boilers and some of the heating lines. And the early estimate is about $5.2 million. Firestone Park, we still have furnace repairs and roof repairs to do. That's about $359,000. At Pfeiffer, there are some issues with the parking lot where there's so many, you know, asphalt replacements, about $40,000. Kenmore High School needs boiler replacement at some point in the near future, along with North High School, which also includes heating lines. And those are ranging between $6 and $7 million each. There's no facility commission funding for these projects, so other than some other, you know, creative financing, that, those funds would have to come from our general fund. And so we need to look at some alternatives, which we're studying now. You know, can any of these buildings move to a new facility? Or can we lease a facility that would have capacity? Or do we do any program with gray configuration changes? Those are things we'll have to explore. And then our special program facilities, like Barrett, Essex, Stewart, Readinger, and I Promise. At Barrett, we have found out that the boiler inspector will not recertify our boilers past June. That's about a $400,000 expense at a minimum. We also are aware that we need a complete building automation system we haul there as well. At Essex, where we operate our early learning program, there are some boiler repairs that will need to be made and parking lot improvements. At Stewart, early learning program, there are some miscellaneous heating, ventilation, and air conditioning repairs that have to be made, about $180,000. Readinger houses are alternative programs, and so far, we don't have major work to be done there. And then at our I Promise School, you know, we're approaching the time where we'll have to look at replacing the shingles on the roof. And then we've had numerous issues with heat pumps over the years. And if we were to do a complete replacement of the roof and all the heat pumps, that's about $1.25 million. Again, these buildings don't get any facility funding either. And similar to the other facilities, we have to look at, you know, can they be relocated? For some of them, no. And then do we look at any program or gray configurations to help mitigate some of those costs? And then, of course, we have our closed buildings, which include Betis, Ariana, Goodridge, Goodyear, Hotchkiss, Kenmore Annex, Lawndale Park Street, Rankin and Smith. Goodyear is the first building that we're preparing to put out for a public auction, to auction the property off. And the remaining buildings will follow suit unless the city or the county has a plan that they want to bring us in terms of adaptive reuse of those facilities. So those are some things that we're keenly aware of that we'll have to look at as we move further down the road. Just for your information, at 10 North Main, our construction should be completed in mid to late March now, by the time we get done with punch list reviews of the building. And we're going to stagger our move into the building, focus on getting floors three through five moved in first. I think the first floor will be our next priority. And Karen, the second floor will be the last priority, only because we know that you do professional development all the way through June. So we want to be sensitive to that. But the building is starting to really take shape as we keep progress on the construction. The one thing that's exciting, I'm sure you read in the paper, you know, part of our 10 North Main project was trading the Perkins Building as part of that transaction. And we know from the city that that property is going to be developed into approximately 90 single-family homes selling between $175,000 and $200,000. And then further down Copley Road at, Portage Bath? Where Kraus, Diagon. They're called, this development is called The Crossings at Old Farm. And it's approximately across the street from Sapporo Stadium Tower Number Two. And so there, they're looking at one and a half to two-story homes between $179,000 and $279,000. Now, from some numbers from the city, as they looked at these projects, they're projecting they could bring up to 252 children into the Buckto Cluster, which, and they're about evenly split between Kraus and Schumacher. Those would be the elementary schools for each of these developments. So we're looking at the numbers. We have Cropper GIS looking at that in terms of what the capacity of those schools are, you know, in terms of what that impact will have. So the implications of all this right now, just of where we need to go, is for our buildings that are not covered by the facility commission, we have some significant dollars that we're going to have to put in them to keep them open. North and Kenmore and Miller South are most critical. Pfeiffer and Firestone Park, you know, there are some repairs that are needed, but the three buildings with the major boiler systems are most critical. So part of what we're going to look at is our buildings or can we take programs and move them to newer facilities that have space? For some, we may have to look at changing some gray configurations in order to make room in some other buildings. And then the new housing developments in the Buckto Cluster might necessitate us doing some gray configurations, like moving sixth grade out of the elementaries back into Buckto to make room for the potential influx of students. But that's not a final, that's not the final save. We have to look at the numbers and then actually get out in the community and talk to them so they're aware of what some of the plans could be and look at some other options. And so I think Mr. Pendleton and I will be working with our pit committee and looking at the five-year forecast in terms of how can we, you know, pay for these projects moving forward? You know, can the sale of property provide funds to do that? I might find, it might provide some, but I don't think a lot. And so those are some things that we'll have to look at moving forward. So do you have any questions? I'm sure you do. Yes, sir.
I would assume, looking at the list of the four that were, the four remaining buildings that are open, not our specialty buildings, but Pfeiffer, Firestone Park, and North, and the other one. You put up the list of needed repairs and some estimated costs, but I'm going to assume that you were looking at repairs that are necessary right now, because I'm pretty sure. So you're kind of going, you're being conservative on the repairs that are needed just to keep those buildings in good working order now.
Absolutely.
But if you're taking the long view, those buildings like Pfeiffer and even Firestone Park need a lot more work.
Oh, yes.
So I mean, and those, I'm assuming those costs will slowly but surely creep up on us over the next couple of years.
I mean, ideally, you would look at, you know, a full renovation of those buildings. So they're up to speed with our other CLC. So for Pfeiffer and Firestone Park, you're probably talking about $15 to $17 million. Usually, for the type of renovations that we would have to do, a lot of times are more expensive than new construction. The problem like at North and Miller South is that if we replace the boilers, we're going to have to replace all the heating pipes because a lot of those, you know, are having issues. So that would, yeah, to keep those buildings, we're going to have to continue to spend money. These are just keep getting them to a point where they're not going to fail immediately. I don't have any other, the problem is, is we close buildings that have been in bad condition. We've really limited, you know, additional space that they can go to. We don't have a lot of options for that. So we have to really be creative in looking at capacity of existing buildings and whether we can move any of the pieces around, you know, to make room. Yes.
I had forgotten that I promised Mr. Pendleton that I would ask, or I would comment about, have him comment about item two. And when you mentioned 10 North Main, it jogged my memory.
Oh, yes.
I was so excited to talk about the donations that I forgot about that. Do you want to talk a little bit about what that money was going toward in 10 North Main, since Mr. James was talking about that building as well? You know, you went and did all that work and then I forgot to ask.
So that contract Mrs. Mansfield referenced was $410,000 tonight in the board agenda. And that's for SoundCom Systems to complete all of the audiovisual and technical capabilities at 10 North Main. It's broken out into four parts. One is the board meeting room for us to have audiovisual recording capabilities, television capabilities, and all the needed technology there. The second is our professional development floor, which is probably our most substantial part of the renovation. Third is all the digital signage in the building. And then fourth is the central sound. So it's pretty comprehensive. There's about 10 pages of details in that contract.
Thank you. I just remembered that he was going to look all that up for me and I was going to mention, I forgot. I guess I'll check.
Any other questions? You see that I was just adding up in my mind just to do some of the, keep us going repairs. And that's what it is, to keep us going, not to look down the future because to build a building, new building, that's the average from $13 to $15 million for an elementary school. And much more, we're going to think about a specialty school, like something like a Miller South, which may be $25 million or more because of all of the state-of-the-art things that you would want to incorporate in a facility like that. So go write to Mr. Pendleton now and say, "Give us a check for that," because he's already made a preliminary forecast. And we're not, we don't have any extra monies for those areas. Correct?
Correct.
So the superintendents have to come up with some creative ideas to present to us in the next couple of months to how to be able to use the facilities that we do have and yet be able to continue all the wonderful and creative things that we have put out to our public. So that's our challenge in the next several months, to be able to figure out ways to do that so that we can continue all of the programs that we have provided. So thank you for that report. By way of the president's report, I went to the NSBA Equity Symposium and again, that one day was just packed with a lot of things. But one of the things that captured my attention because it was covered almost in two sections, was trauma. And we've talked about trauma, but here, the president was talking about trauma as relates to teachers. Have individual teachers realize what their trauma is. Because whatever that trauma, whatever those experiences they have, reflect how they deal with their teaching, as well as how that they deal with students who have trauma themselves. So we talked again about trauma in form of learning, talked about attachment and trauma, support and educating and advocating and awareness, social learning theory, the theories, the ACEs, which is the adverse childhood experiences. But the instructor was saying, not just for the students, but even we as board members need to know what our ACE number is. Teachers need to know what their ACE number is so that they're able to then walk somewhat in the shoes of the students that they are teaching. So again, we've got some work to do on our level in what does trauma mean, not only for the teacher, but trauma for our students, the students that we are responsible for. I don't know all the details, I can't go into detail, but there's a little fellow that was downstairs just today that I happened to run into with his mother. And he loves math. He was just saying, "I love math, but I don't like spelling tests." He just doesn't like spelling tests, but he loves math. Very bright. But he has some concerns in his life, autism, which unfortunately, he was here because of some disciplinary activity. We're struggling as a district with suspension, expulsion. What do we do? How do we help students who have that kind of trauma, those kinds of events? Is expulsion, is suspension the best way to deal with those issues of trauma? I don't know. I'm not the expert. But she wrote a book, because she is the expert, Dr. Melissa Saden and Nathan Levy, Teacher's Guide to Trauma. So maybe there are some things that we need to find time to instruct and help our teacher staff. How do we deal with those things that our students bring to us? Trauma Informed Behavioral Assessment. All of those things that we need to be intelligent about and aware about so that we can help one another, teachers and students and staff, so that we can keep our students in the seat as much as possible, as well as protect our teachers from those students who have various outbursts related to their trauma or the situations that they're going through. So those were, those are the things that tug at your heart. And we don't have all of the answers, but we need to begin to move forward to do our best, the best that we can to help everyone. And the other is, you may have seen in Sunday's Life paper, the young musician reaches out, Kofi "Ba-Ya-"
Balachi.
Balachi, who will be on Thursday night sharing a fundraiser. So we encourage those who can go. For some of us, we had already registered and going to go into a district workshop up in, near Cleveland, but we're very supportive. He was there at the Urban League's Martin Luther King Celebration, was highlighted, which was in the article, by the speaker, who said he would support him, which he did financially as well as support verbally. So for those persons who are interested, it was a nice article in the paper. He's, you know, our student and he'll be going to Berkeley. And because of the finances of Berkeley, he needs some additional support in those areas. So those who can, support that, we encourage you to do so. Those are the things that I wanted to highlight. Treasures report?
No report.
No report. Committed reports, legal, contracts.
And board policy committee?
No report.
No report. Finance and capital management?
A report.
No report. Instructional policy and student achievement?
Just a couple updates, I'll start. And Ms. Mansfield will pick up afterwards. As everyone knows, the goal of our mathematics team is to assure and make sure that our work is geared towards preparation for our students when they enter their future careers and pathways to success. Teaching and learning mathematics in APS has faced numerous changes over the years. And since 2012, middle school and Algebra I math adoption, there's been many different changes that have taken place. Common core state standards have been replaced with 2017 Ohio learning standards. State assessments have gone digital. We put a device in the hand- We put a device in the hands of every student, and college and career academies are a reality. Amidst these changes, one constant remains, algebra is the gatekeeper to success and higher learning, the platform from which our students step as they enter their future. And that is so true. And as APS stakeholders, it is our collective responsibility, board and everyone around this table and in this room, it's all of our responsibilities to empower students in constructing a strong platform. And a strong curriculum with ongoing support is essential to this construction. Beginning in May 2018, a team of teachers conducted a thorough review of publisher resources, evaluating each against a well-defined rubric. This is according to mathematics. In November 2018, the steering committee approved the team's recommendation to present to the board for adoption purposes, the Pearson Education EEP materials for grades six through eight and Algebra I. If you didn't notice earlier, Ms. Ruth Hachkis was outside, and she was willing to talk to anyone who would come over and see the display on the mathematics adoption, and we thank her for that. Also thank her for a presentation that she gave to Ms. Mansfield and myself, which was very, very wonderful experience, to know that this mathematics adoption is coming into fruition, and that the display right outside will be out there until February 11th. If you didn't have a chance to see it, please go and see it. It's very informative and enlightening as far as where we're going with this algebra and the mathematics adoption. So thanks to all who participated on any committee leading towards this initiative, and all of you in the room, thank you just for what you contribute every day.
Just want to talk a little bit, Ms. Lasher mentioned the career expo that she asked to go to. You said you went to the Eller one? Eller. So all of our students in grade nine through twelve, during the month of January, have been attending or will attend, hopefully, even with school closing. The expos for their schools, they get time, they've already had time to explore some of the pathways, but this will give them a chance to explore the careers available in each pathway, as Ms. Lasher described very well. So far, all of reports have been that everything has gone fantastic. We've had community partners showcase the pathways. And from everything we've heard, they've been well-run. The students were exceptionally prepared and very articulate. And after attending these career expos, the students complete a pathway application. So those have to be in by February 14th. Oh, that looks nice. On February 14th. And they have to indicate, ones they love, their first, second, and third choices of their pathways. So there's also an essay portion to each choice, requiring the students to explain why they chose the pathways listed. And then the counselors will review those applications with the students during course selection process, and each academy will be created. So the ball is really rolling now. I don't, you know, it's like a snowball going downhill or something, because it's moving. Speaking of snowballs going downhill, while I've got the floor for a moment, I meant to mention in Communities' Core Reflections, but I do want to give a shout-out to the superintendent, but also to Ms. Volk and Mr. Ann Duxler for keeping us moving on Wednesday, despite all the challenges that there were, for all of us, to get places. And just, just a huge shout-out that people were safe and arrived at school, even if it took a while, and even if there were challenges. So just a huge shout-out to them for their professionalism and for what they do every day that goes usually completely unnoticed, but you know, if you get stuck, people notice those big yellow buses. So, but just a big shout-out to them and all of the transportation staff and everyone that keeps those buses moving, and especially in this awful weather and everything that's going on. So just want to throw that out there as well.
Just to add on, and then I'm going to circle back.
Okay.
And with that, and I, we all know this too, again, I just want to echo the kudos, because it's one of those things where you're going to be confronted on whatever decision you make, whether you make a decision to close school or to not close school. So again, just kudos, and we know that's not an easy spot, and we appreciate it, and how hard all of you work to make sure that things do keep on schedule. And just a fun wrap back around to the academies. Aiden is in seventh grade, and he's just starting the career exploration and has the class now as part of his program. And I know that we've done a lot of those things in the past, but the lens now just seems to be interesting, and he's already exploring what he wants to be and looking it up. So I guarantee you, if you tell him your title, he can probably tell you how much you make with an array. He loves whatever tools they're using. So he says, I can't find a land bank director. And orthodontist, what he's, whatever.
So he's sure job's made up, is that what you mean?
Yes. Yes, no idea. Thank you very much. Before we get any unfinished business, any new business?
Yes. So in your panel, first, I, board members already know Diana Fido from Retso, who's interim legal counsel. So we got a location agreement. The film director who did the movie Unlikely is coming back to Akron on Wednesday. So I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying he's coming on Wednesday to film the function at Firestone regarding the whole career exploration. It's with, American Express is doing a documentary. I believe we have a couple of Firestone graduates who are coming back to attend that function, and so they're doing a documentary on, I think, what happens to kids, you know, when they leave high school and then want to do their own businesses, and what our school is doing to, you know, promote that. So Diana reviewed, because all this stuff, when you deal with these folks, it all comes at the last minute typically, or I'm always the last in, but she did a wonderful job of reviewing it, taking out things just from my own experience that I know we can't live with. So we have an agreement. I need approval, so I can sign it and work with the person, so they can reschedule their visit. Maybe, all right. So that's the first sign.
So we need a motion?
Yes.
Has been moved to, second, any questions or comments to the superintendent? Roll call? Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. James, did you want to pass those?
Yes.
I can talk a little bit about that.
Perfect.
I know I mentioned this when they were chosen, the Firestone choirs have been chosen. I know women's symphonic and vocal jazz are all performing for the Ohio Music Educators Association Conference in Cleveland. Now, we've had groups be chosen before. I know Mr. James and I went up and saw that the band was chosen a few years ago, but never in the history of OMEA have choirs from, this many choirs from one, one school district, let alone one single school been chosen to come and perform. So it is a great honor that they were chosen, and we're going to make sure that they get there safely and go from there. So we wish them the best of luck, and it's such a great honor, so I wanted to make sure that it was mentioned. And thanks to Deb for pushing these out, too.
Thank you very much. Now, just one or two little notes, again, from the conference. And we've talked about this before, and I think, Deb or Volk, she's not, she's off. What is the best time for learning? And it was brought to our attention again. High school students need to go to school at ten to five. That's the best time they learn. Elementary school students need to go earlier. That's the best time they learn. And middle school students somewhere in between. Now, there was a school district that has adopted this, where the high school schoolers go after ten o'clock AM in the morning. They've adjusted their athletic events to correspond with that new school day. So those are just things, I was just throwing out, that it's conversation that I know the NSBA in this particular workshop was talking about, because again, relating to trauma and sensitivity, what's the best way to have our students to learn? And I know that caused all kinds of havoc for transportation and for other, other things that go along with that. Do you have any opinions?
About the ten to five, I think that's a smart, I think that's like a smart way, because from seeing other children or other students and experiencing like the mouth that I've seen, and stuff they go through and stuff. And for example, transportation, I know, I know like their parents can't make it in the morning or something, so they have to miss the whole day of school just because of the thirty minutes delay or something. So I think the consideration of a ten to five, I think that's a smart way. And it shows that they're trying to care, and it shows that they're trying to make effort.
All the data.
And the other, we had conversation, I know in finance committee, crowdfunding, what's the best way for our teachers to be able to generate resources for their classroom? So the keynote speaker for the lunch was Charles Best, the founder and CEO of DonorsChoose.org. And one of the impressive things that he brought was all of the security that's in place, not only for the person who's receiving the gift, because they purchase the items. They don't send money to the school or money to the classroom. They purchase those items that the teacher requests in the classroom. They do background checks on who's receiving it, who's donating money, make sure there's no pictures of students, nothing that could ID the students or cause any kind of problems. So there's a lot of security in that. And I know we did talk about them as being a positive source for our teachers to generate funds for the classroom. And it is millions of dollars that they're receiving, but also millions of dollars that they are spending out helping school districts. And a lot of it is helping school districts that are other than your own. There are funding sources that help, let's say, school district and our neighbor's school district, not necessarily our own school district, because how people are spending out funds. But it's a very productive, very positive way for teachers to enhance their ability to receive funds and donations. There is no need for, isn't any need for executive session? And do we need to re, do we, so at this time, we'll receive a motion to, the move, and seconded? Any questions or comments?
Can I just say, I don't know that Mr. Bravo ever had any.
No. Roll call, please.
Yeah, I know, we get a lot of talking, too. And we still got older.
Roll call. Mrs. Baylor?
Yes. Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Thank you very much.